We got no audio. Well, we don't have any audio either. Oh, great.
Check, check.
Tell you what, this is.
We need to.
Check, check.
The sound guy and have him.
I just.
Here, let me try some different mics.
Oh.
No.
Yeah, those lights didn't.
Well, this lights, the lights are on, but there's no audio coming out of any.
You know, guys, uh, what Yvette did was, I think it worked this last meeting, and I don't know, but she took those things off.
Did that work? Cause we.
It did, it did, but it was the best it's been throughout.
Yeah, but they're not.
They're not working at all now.
They're not working out of system.
And I have. Everything is, I mean, the lights are all on, so I'm not understanding why they don't work.
I just thought you'd, you need to speak up real loud so you're heard.
Yeah. Yeah, but what mic is it gonna pick it up from?
Well, none of them are working, I.
No, I mean, just the computer mic?
It's probably be right up here on the, I believe it'll be on the camera mic.
Yeah, we can speak loud.
Let me see if I can, see if anyone's on, thinks we're live, I can ask them if they're, um, can hear it.
Are we already live?
Yeah, we are live.
Ask the audience, phone friend.
They are on and they sound great. That's what Karen said. Alright, so maybe the mics don't do anything.
Alright, we will.
Alright, we'll go.
We'll start the meeting with the call of the plug debates.
I pledge allegiance to the high of the United States of America. And to the Republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright. Uh, we'll start with the approval of minutes from the regular meeting on December twenty seventh, our wrap-up meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve as written.
Second that motion. I've got a motion by Jamie, a second by Jerry to approve the meeting minutes from our regular meeting December twenty seventh. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Just can ask that, do we have any claims for?
Not yet.
Not yet? Okay. Next up, we have reorganization of commissioner positions. Let's see, do we have? Jerry, do you have any interest or Jamie, do you have any interest of making changes?
Do you have any interest?
Last year, I got the other one, so, uh, stayed on Jamie. Uh, he said we didn't talk about it.
We didn't? No, we haven't talked about it at all. Um. I, I don't have an opinion. I mean, I, I'm fine with leaving it as it is, or, or if you guys, if you're, uh, if you want one of us to take over as president, I'm fine with that as well.
I had no problem doing it again, at least for another year. If that's what, you guys aren't good with that?
That being said, I'll make a motion for Grant.
Speak up, Jerry, they're telling us.
I'll make a motion for Grant to remain president, or be reappointed for president of the Board of Commissioners for the twenty twenty-three year.
I'll second the motion.
I've got a motion by Jerry to appoint myself, Grant Dean, as president for the twenty twenty-three calendar year as commissioner president. It's been seconded by Jamie. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. With that, I would make a motion to appoint Jamie Peters as vice president for the twenty twenty-three year. Second that motion. I made a motion to appoint Jamie Peters as vice president of the commissioners for the year of twenty twenty-three, seconded by Jerry. All in favor?
Aye.
Next up, we have old business, the employee handbook, employee handbook for the twenty twenty-three year.
Um, I asked Suzy to add this to the agenda, since there's been a lot of, I think, talk and in some cases confusion as it relates to the handbook that was.
I think we're back.
Initially, they affected the day.
I think we're back on.
Or, excuse me, the first.
Something got turned out.
I thought it was important that we. I thought it was important that we kind of go through the chronology of events that happened, uh, as it relates to adopting that handbook and, and kind of where we're at today. Uh, so I'm gonna start with, um, on Monday, November the twenty-eighth, the Board of Commissioners met with the personnel advisory committee, um, to discuss, uh, some of the policy changes and get clarification on some of the policy changes that was in the handbook. Then, uh, which was a public meeting. Then on Monday, December the fifth, at the normal commissioners meeting, uh, obviously, which was a public meeting, the commissioners voted, uh, to adopt the new employee handbook. Then on Thursday, December the eighth, we had a management meeting, which was a public meeting, where department heads and elected officials, uh, were conformed of the changes as it relates to the new handbook. Then on December the nineteenth, uh, the commissioners had a meeting, I believe with, uh, well, December nineteenth, that was a regular meeting, uh, at which time we had, uh, we were electing the advisory committee, um, and Will Gary showed up at that meeting thinking it was to discuss the handbook, I believe is correct. Um, at which time he voiced concerns and stated that he, uh, had been retained as counsel for the employees of Switzerland County. Then on December the twenty-seventh, uh, the commissioners heard concerns, again at a public meeting, from the elected official and, and department heads. Uh, also, at that time, Will Gary, uh, took the floor and spoke on behalf of the employees of Switzerland County. Again, stating that he was representing the employees of Switzerland County, and that he would likely file a formal complaint with a public, uh, with PAT, public, uh.
Access.
Access counselor, yes, that's Suzy. So that kind of is the chronology up till today. There had been nothing that I'm aware of, uh, that happened in addition to that prior to today. Uh, today, the commissioners received a formal complaint from the public access counselor on behalf of Judge Coy, um, stating that he felt like we were in violation of Indiana open door law. Uh, also today, we received a formal, uh. Well, let me put this, also today, Will Gary filed in Switzerland County Circuit Court, a complaint, if you will, or lawsuit, on behalf of residents Vicky Henman and Matthew Conaway, uh, where he is asking for declaratory, declaratory judgment and adjunctive relief on behalf of those residents. Uh, also, his claim states that he feels like the commissioners and council is in violation of Indiana open door law. So that's kind of where we're at today. Based on that information and today's, uh, additional, I'll, I'll say, formal complaints and, and, uh, lawsuits, uh, I reached out to PAT, uh, which is Switzerland County's legal council to get, uh, advice going forward and, and what we should do. Um, I would say that, uh, and I'm gonna back up just a second, I meant to say this. Uh, although Will has come in front of the commissioners on two occasions and stated that he is representing the employees of Switzerland County, uh, to this date, he has never filed a formal complaint or lawsuit, uh, with the commissioners or the council on behalf of the employees of, of Switzerland County. Uh, and, and I did have that discussion with our legal council today as well. Uh, with that said, legal council told me that the commissioners basically have three options. We can do nothing, uh, leave the handbook policy, uh, as enacted. We can, uh, rescind our vote, if you will, or adoption of the handbook, uh, as a second option. And then finally, a third option is that we can amend the effective date of the handbook, um, to some point in the future, be it April the first, or whenever, uh, and give time for the public access council and, uh, Circuit Court to make rulings on the complaints and, and lawsuits. Now, I would also say that, uh, when Will initially, uh, on December the nineteenth, I believe it was, said that he was, excuse me, no, it was on December the twenty-seventh, when he stated that he would likely go to the public access council, uh, with his complaint, we did reach out to the public access council and ask for an opinion. Uh, we have received a, uh, we have received feedback, but not a formal opinion. Uh, that feedback was that although the advisory committee probably was in violation of Indiana open door law, uh, but the commissioners, uh, did have public meetings, uh, discussions, addressing the changes. We did have public meetings adopting the handbook, and therefore, the commissioners were not in violation of open door law, and the handbook should be a legal binding document as adopted. Uh, but, again, we don't have a formal opinion, that's just initial response from public access counselor's office. Uh, so I think it's important that we, uh, you know, everyone knows where we're at, how we got to where we're at, and then I think the commissioners now need to make a decision on what do we want to do? Do we want to, uh, rescind and fall back to the old policy manual? Do we want to amend the effective date, or do we want to do nothing, um, and leave it as is? So with that said, uh, I think we could have, have that discussion now.
I think the other, the other point to make is that in both the formal complaint with P I C and through the lawsuit filed by two residents, in both cases, it is a, uh, complaint on the open door policy and the interpretation of the open door policy that provided, uh, the, the avenue for which those meetings were conducted, when they were advertised, and, and how much, uh, advertisement were given for folks to attend. Uh, in, in neither complaint or lawsuit is there anything in, in there that, um, that calls out that there has been any wrongdoing or anything has been enacted or voted upon by the commissioners or council, uh, that would violate any sort of, uh, authority or, uh, or purpose. And so I think that the, uh, but the point I want to make is that, uh, this is simply a, uh, a, a, an attempt to delay, uh, and also an attempt to, uh, bring additional meetings for discussion, uh, in which the, the committee and commissioners have the right to make and have those forums with or without, uh, feedback from the public. So I think that those are our key points, that it, it really comes down to whether or not the meetings to discuss the handbook were advertised, uh, and, and they were not done so uh, due to the, the way in which we formed the committee, uh, that that was not the intent, uh, and so we're still waiting on, obviously, clarification if that was, if that was truly the issue. Um, so that's, that's the issue at hand. Jerry, do you have anything else you want to state? Okay. Uh, I think then, secondly, there, with, with the three options, uh, obviously, we, it really comes down to a timing of either enactment or us being proactive or waiting for feedback from the P I C or a lawsuit in court ruling to come through, which would not allow us to set a date. Did, did PAT provide any direction on, um, what's kind of positives and negatives, or what, what, the negative to any of those three options?
He, he didn't, um, I mean, if, if you think about some of the things that were adopted in the new handbook, so for example, paying out of comp time, uh, change of office hours ago in effect February the first. Those are things that you can't really reverse once you've adopted them, right, or enacted them. So if we pay out comp time and then there is a ruling or an opinion that's given that we were in violation, how do we go back and change, change that? Does that make sense? Meaning, how, how do we, if we've paid with comp time, they no longer have comp time, so, uh, and, and now we have to fall back to the old policy manual, then the complaint then is gonna be, well, you took my comp time and paid for it, but I still should have it. So are you gonna, what am I gonna do, go back and collect the money back from you?
No, but I would say that would be a risk if we lost a ruling in court. Or we future-dated it, or we rescinded it. All of those would have that same effect. The only option we have now is if we do rescind or put it, push the date to a future date, we can choose not to pay out comp time at this time.
Exactly.
However, in, in doing so, that would push comp time payouts to be paid at twenty twenty-three rates and not twenty twenty-two rates, which, uh, in essence gives a more, it makes it more expensive to pay out comp time, and that would be against the current ruling from council that did approve payout at the twenty twenty-two rates.
Gail, do you know what the current comp hours are to pay out, is calculated to be?
No, we got them all taken today, the forms. I mean, people have already signed off on them, saying this is what they're gonna pay at the twenty twenty-two rate. And they signed off on it that they were okay with it.
Right.
So.
So let's assume.
So all those forms would be void if you guys didn't do that.
Yes. Yes. So let's assume that it was thirty thousand dollars payout in comp time, six percent was the increase. However, I would also tell you that the lawsuit that was presented today says that the approved, um.
Salary ordinance.
Salary ordinance is also, uh, not valid, uh, so therefore, increases would not be valid either. Um, but what I started to say is that, uh, if we assume thirty thousand dollars at six percent, it's eighteen hundred dollars. So that would be the incremental cost for the, for the delay in the twenty-three versus twenty-two.
Correct.
Um. I, I think the fact that potentially you can have, if we go ahead and enact this, uh, and then, and there is a unfavorable ruling, then I think that you could potentially have additional litigation, uh, based on that. And I think that cost is gonna be higher than eighteen hundred dollars, is my opinion. Um.
I would agree.
I, I think, I guess, I'll just go ahead and give you my opinion. My opinion is that I think we should amend the effective date to something like one April, for example. Uh, give time for, uh, the public access counselor to issue a formal opinion, give time to the courts to issue, uh, formal judgment. Uh, if that's done prior to April the first, we could have an emergency or, or, uh, special meeting and go ahead and, uh, amend it again and make it effective immediately. That, that's kind of my opinion. I don't think we want to, um, I don't personally want to say, I just wanna throw it out the door, because I don't, I didn't vote in favor of it in order to throw it out the door. Um, but I also think that there's some risk associated with leaving everything effective January the first, in the event there's an unfavorable ruling.
And that, one of my big questions was if we modify the effective date to a future date, we can make that change really at any time. So if we get to a point where a ruling is made favorable or unfavorable, we can then amend that effective date to be effective immediately or to an earlier date that we would so choose.
Yeah, I, I would anticipate if we receive an unfavorable ruling, we will have to go through the entire process all over and adopt the handbook all over, uh, and not be in violation of any open door law.
Agreed. Well, if it's the case of a favorable ruling, we could then move up the effect.
The date, absolutely. Just, just like we can move it up today, to April first, or whatever date we decide, we can move it back, uh, once a, a ruling, assuming it's favorable, has been made. Well, if we change the effective date, then we won't pay it out, because we will still be operating under the old policy handbook.
And then secondarily, with the fact that the lawsuit also ties the salary ordinances to, with the handbook, uh, if we push the effective date to a future date, does that push our potential comp time payout and the start of any pay raises to that same date?
I, I can't speak to the pay raises, obviously, the comp time would, um, I think council's gonna have to get with.
They would have.
With legal council and find out what the, what their avenues are, because I have not had that conversation with legal council.
Okay. And that would probably have to happen pretty quickly. But payroll, payroll right now is getting ready to get processed for the final payroll of twenty twenty-two.
Okay, pay.
And, right, and then when does that payroll for the first pay period in January have to get submitted?
The, the thirteenth.
Suzy, we need a calendar.
Yeah.
Make a note of that.
They'll have to submit, time sheets will be ending for the thirteenth, so they should have them entered in by the Monday at the latest, which is a holiday, so.
So council meeting would be able to, potentially be able to make a decision whether or not pay raises are getting delayed until a future date or, or another payroll.
Or get pay dates.
That would be a.
I mean, I would assume that they did.
The payday would be the twentieth, so you would need your time sheets in by the thirteenth.
And, and I would assume that, again, in a purely assumption, that they could delay them until this litigation is complete, and then make them effective with a retro date to January the first, if that's what they decided to do. But again, that's purely an assumption.
Yeah, okay.
The fact that it's named in one of the suits, they have to seek legal counsel and find that out.
What their, what the legal options are and how to go into effect.
Correct.
So that being said, I, I would make a motion to amend the date of the, uh, with Jamie's recommendation, after speaking to legal counsel, to amend the date of adoption of the twenty twenty-three handbook to April one, pending litigation.
I'll second the motion.
I've got a motion by Jerry to amend the adoption of the employee, twenty twenty-three employee handbook. Uh, the adoption date moved from January first to April first, pending litigation. I have a second by Jamie. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So I have a question, cause I know I'll be asked tomorrow, what are you gonna do about their, their time?
Everything will be, sort of the old policy handbook.
So they have this and other days, this and other days, this will be an effective all April.
One, one of the things that I would, I would ask all elected officials and department heads to familiarize themselves with is the number of comp hours employees were supposed to be allowed to carry over per the old policy manual. It clearly stated eighty, but elected officials and department heads were not following those guidelines, so I would, I would ask for.
Not all were.
No, I, I said.
Yeah.
I, I can't say who was in violation, just because I don't know who all was, cause I don't know who all has more than eighty hours that they're carrying over, but, uh, it clearly stated that he was only allowed to carry over eighty hours.
Right. So for clarification, I will say that the change of the implementation date of the handbook that will change, there, there will be no comp time payout on this payroll?
It was gonna be a separate check anyway, so you better be happy about that.
Right, so that, that goes away. Uh, the comp time, overtime, and vacation policies remain the same as the old policy. Uh, and to per Jamie's point, any carryover in the policy from the, the old handbook, carryover into twenty twenty-three goes retro to the old policy. Uh, and then secondarily, the change to office hours that were set to begin in the first week of February, those, that will also be tabled, uh, to a future date as well. Are there any other major? Not connected other kids? Okay. Okay. On our new business, Gail, where else? We have painting and carpet in the treasurer's office?
Yes. I'm sure that mic is on there. I'll push it towards you. Oh, so sorry. Now she knows I'm towards. Okay, now I get that.
Our respectful, like, ask to get have new carpet, putting down, my carpet is the original that was done when the courthouse was remodeled many years ago. Jerry was just in my office today, kind of looked at it. Uh, from moving the furniture around and the, the desk, et cetera, there are waves, most of them are hidden by our chair paths, but there, the carpet is, is taking a rare beating this year, because when the wall was removed, all of that dust, et cetera, then when they reconditioned the wall that's there, because we're going to lay natural brick instead of having it, uh, reclastered, yeah, thank you. So that was another mess, but, uh, I would really like to get new carpet, and then the walls, of course, especially, that one dark wall has taken another major hit. So I would really appreciate it if you consider painting and, uh, new carpet for my office. That would be, that would be really nice. So, uh, I understand that, um, Dawn had the same thing, but you asked her to go to county council, and I do understand that if that's what I need to do.
Right, I, I think the opinion that I gave Dawn was that if she didn't have it in her budget, uh, obviously, the commissioners don't have it in their budget either, uh, so I asked her to go to council and get approval for the spending.
The treasurer is one of two offices that doesn't have any additional accounts to draw from, so, and of course, we don't budget for remodeling or renovations or furniture or anything like that. So would you rather I go to council and ask, or, um?
I guess my opinion, just my opinion, is that had you come to the commissioners prior to adoption of the new budget, so we could have put it in, I would have no problem putting it in there. Uh, either way, either we're gonna have to go to council and ask for the funding, or you're gonna have to go to council and ask for the funding, because it's not in the budget.
I see that. I can certainly go to council myself and just explain the situation, and I'll be glad to do that. I have one more thing, and I know it's not on your agenda, but I sent all of you an email, uh, at the end of the year, and it had to do with the mobile home ordinance. Did you all receive that? And the whole pol, the whole reason for that ordinance is to keep people from bringing in such old mobile homes that, you know, that we really, that are undesirable. And, uh, the new ordinance is written, you might want to bump it up about twenty years, because it hasn't been reviewed in a long time. So I just thought I'd make sure everybody saw that email.
And I think, go ahead.
I'd say I did see that, uh, that, that our ordinances and, and policies, aside from the handbook side of it, that's more like the county policies and ordinances.
Yes, exactly what it is.
Absolutely, it's under review and, and we need to make some changes. I know even, um, like, uh, from the, from the building side and things that have come from either issues we had around floodplain or just we've had some community complaints, uh, those are absolutely things that we need to make.
Well, somebody pointed it out to me, and I thought, well, I can't thank you, so I thought I'd pass it on to you.
Yes.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Who's doing it? Contractor Jimmy Hayes, who's sitting right here in front of us. He's working on the.
Are we doing more, more, tough point, pushing that wall up?
Do you wanna step up on there?
Yeah.
Just so they can hear you.
I don't mean to, uh, with what she just brought up, I, I went in and looked at her office today. Frankly, I agree with her, that her partners have gone years. But, you know, after we were going through the remodeling process, we decided to keep the brick instead of putting like drywall. But as I looked, unlooked it and looked today, it looks, or not well.
Okay.
I mean, I mean, I mean, there's one part that's dark and the rest of it's faded. I don't know if that was during the cleaning process.
No, it's, I, I tell you what that means.
Or what, but.
When they, uh, when they put the brick in.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
When they, when they did this break, they used their worst brick on the inside. Instead of their best, their best brick. So when you expose that on the inside of the wall, what you're seeing is original brick. And unfortunately, because you're seeing the original brick, that's gonna be all covered, you're not covered on that. I think it is, it's part and parcel of it. We took off, we didn't just take off plaster, maybe. We took off the baked mortar heels and everything else because when they did that, they made all that stuff bumpy, so the plaster would stick to it. Uh, now, there is, uh, there is one brick that is loose that needs to be tuck pointed in, uh, and there are probably have another half dozen or so at least tuck point spots.
Several areas look, I mean, I'm not a contractor, but it looked to me like more.
Yeah, I did tell her, I did tell her this morning that that would be done.
There's lots of complaints.
But I wanted to put, I wanted to put a clear sealer on it first because I wanted to stop any more dust or any more mortar from coming out.
Okay, and does that affect doing more tuck pointing?
Not, not at all. No, not at all. And that's a, I mean, it's a clear sealer, so I can put as many coats on as I need to. And it's a natural comb, but it's not gonna make the sheen any greater. Um, I actually, uh, now that we're here, so when I'm done with that wall, um, the ceiling looks rough, and the walls in there look rough. Because obviously, there was a lot of work done around it even before we got there, so, uh. Uh, you guys, you know, the county's number one does as far as, uh, let us do work that we've done so far. So my thinking was, uh, if she picked the color out, then we can take care of the walls in there for her, for the.
So now she only needs to ask for carpet.
Right. She didn't know that.
She left.
Oh, thanks. Because, you know, my, my thinking is, um, except for, we didn't talk about it beforehand, but I'm gonna do it because, uh, I mean, if, if you look at the wall. You know, there's two inches thrown out on either side of the wall, plastic was, so I'm just gonna take a one by three, turn it sideways against the wall, yeah, yeah, same with the ceiling. And I think that's the best way to make it look as, as huge as we can. So since that's going on there, it needs to be painted. I don't want to paint it the color that it's now, especially if it's gonna be changed. So no, no bigger than that particular office is my fault, but.
And I, I appreciate that. Um, so, so do you think you can, uh. Clean up some of the holes and tuck point that wall?
So that, I wanna be very clear, I can fill all the holes, there's no issue with that, but I can't change the color of the brick. I can keep putting more sealer on there to see if it could darken some of it up, uh, but there was one particular area that she spoke to me about. I put a third coat on to me to see if it would darken up. Uh, we'll see what it does when it dries. Uh, but there is gonna be a variation in the gray. They, they didn't use, they didn't use this green. It's on the inside, it's gonna be closer.
Some of that's really part of the character of.
Yeah, and that's fine. It just looks like, I mean, there's, there's lots of spots right now where it looks like the, you know, mortar's fallen out. And so she said something about it being sealed. I'm like, well, wouldn't you, wouldn't you tuck point that first?
So, well, part of, again, part of the reason I went ahead and put the sealer on it is because, well, I think when we cleaned that wall up. We had the window open, we had the fan blowing out dust, and it was still, I mean, looked like a silo. Because dusty has all paid out. So, uh, we got everything that had come out that was loose, we got it out. And my fault was go ahead and get it sealed up because, again, it doesn't, it doesn't hurt anything to have a seal where you're tuck pointing, to do a seal up over it. It's not like paint is trying to show up. Uh, and again, it's a basically a flat, a flat sheet, um, you know, natural sheen, so it's not gonna be effective at all.
Okay.
But she'll take the color out, we'll just stay here.
Okay. Well, we appreciate that.
So then I guess to move on though, our next, next item up was the carpet.
Courtroom carpet installation.
Yeah, speaking to him like you just did. Let's raise it. I'm still good.
All the sound in a hundred thirty-five, thank you.
Got some extra sound equipment? Yes.
No one's ever happy with it. So what you do is you act like you're adjusting it, and you don't, and then the sound sounds great.
Sounds good. Okay. Courtroom carpet install?
Uh, yes. So I worked with Suzie on this quite a bit, and, uh, what I'll do is I'll run through it. And then feel free to ask me as many questions as you want. I have to give you some clarification too. There we go. Labor and material, number one, is to prep the floors in the courtroom for carpet tiles, including sanding down high spots. Uh, using a cleaning solution, clean the floors, and then prep for carpet tile adhesive. So basically, the first option is to just lay on hardwood this year, big hardwood up and lay on hardwood. Uh, number two.
So this is either or?
Correct.
So option one is, first option.
And if you look at the bottom, where it says double, uh, where, where it says double.
Yes.
You'll see options one and thirty, and options two and thirty.
Okay.
Four and five are gonna be both of them. They have to be done in progress.
Okay.
Okay, so option two is to sand down the high spots and lay the wood, glue on board down. Uh, which I'll be very honest with you, after looking at that floor, and I have some pictures I can show you, I feel like that's probably the best option. I really do. Um, there's a lot of gaps in that carpet, and we're gonna be putting adhesive down, putting carpet tile over it. And while I have a doubt, I don't want to ever get a high view of something there, I do think down the road, some of the pressure's been causing issues with the carpet. I really do. And the other thing is, if fifty years from now, somebody decides they want to restore that hardwood, they pull it up, sand it down, and they don't have to worry about sanding through a patchment or a piece of. I mean, they'll have to, they'll have some table, but that's pretty easily filled when you're sanding, it'll fill with the wood. Um, number three, apply carpet adhesive with trowel, lay carpet tiles on the adhesive, the riser edges. I actually have a, I took a picture, I can show you, uh, you all if you want, um, what I mean about riser edges. Yeah, back them up there.
Sure.
Now, across the bench, of course. See the, the edges there, the risers all where that trim is?
Yes.
You got that face there? So, uh, the plan would be to keep trimming all, all those risers. Lay the carpet tile to the edge, and then paint the face of the risers, differentiate it, so no one, the little trips below the high. And maybe just paint that to match the cushion on.
Perfect. Carpet is a four?
Or wait, it actually looks like it was painted before, or it was like. Yeah, okay.
Then it would be doing the same.
Now, trim's gonna be, trim's gonna be ripped up with pews, but we would just replace it.
So really, the only difference in your quote is, one, you're gonna try to prep the, and number one, you're gonna try to prep the floor well enough to get a good adhesive.
Right.
Surface for your carpet tiles.
Correct.
And number two is saying, hey, I don't have to do there's much prep work. I'll put down luan. There is no prep to the luan, I just put adhesive down. I know I've got a good surface.
Correct. All you have to do is, and I'm gonna be stable.
Right.
Uh, it'll be a good, good surface. The other thing too is, putting down luan even though it's a quarter inch, once all those high spots are sanded, it will level that out just a little bit. It'll be a nice surface. And if, you know, it's another quarter inch padding, uh, maybe we'll use your wall on, and I think you'll help with, get those tops to, uh, save better shit for longer. And if you look at the bottom of it, uh, I put the carpet tile cost approximately two dollars and thirty-five cents a square foot. Again, this is where I, I don't, I would certainly never put boards in her mouth. I worked with Suzie quite a bit on, on doing some research on, on cost. And she had some samples she was given, uh, from some different contractors, and some of these costs were four dollars, or thirty-five, or, I mean, just absolutely astronomical. And, um, I did some research and, and I feel like if we get that two thirty-five, and get something, and I actually have something that I could show you that I, uh. Yes, okay. A picture I could send you guys, uh, I, I believe maybe you, we said it's Jamie, I think, um, and, uh, of, of what I found.
Suzie, and I do know you work a lot at the carpet, I mean, I know there's a quality standpoint in there, and.
Right.
I'm sorry, I trust both of your recommendations, but you're talking about same carpet level warranties, commercial use.
These are commercial.
One to one, one to one person.
Yes, yes. Now, obviously, yes, and that's everything I was getting to. I live here in P D, so, you know, I have to, I have to stand by my work. And I feel like that putting that down five years, something's gonna happen. It's gonna happen within five years, and then I'll just take care of it.
That's just on, it purely got, right?
That's correct. Yeah, and so if it needs to be replaced, so the other thing too is, when you're doing this, I'm sure you guys know, but if you don't, you have to add ten percent. So we're looking at about thirty-one hundred square feet, so I actually be doing this based on thirty-four hundred square feet. So there may be some material left over, and again, which would be great, if it's ever being repaired, we don't have to try to search it down and find that, uh, materials out here if we have any left.
Roll carpet is, if you do catch a spot, you can replace it.
Correct.
A I O first.
And you'll never have to worry about leveling it on yet, rolling it up or anything like that. And, you know, the, the carpet tiles are, are, are a lot more robust if it spills, and stuff do, where sometimes it spills, will seep down into your carpet, get your padding away, and all that. You just don't have that with carpet tiles. And the other thing is that quality, the luan eliminates if we don't buy the highest end carpet tile. Because we put it on a nice, clean, fresh surface. And so the weight on the bottom of the carpet tile that would normally happen on that hardwood is no longer an issue.
Okay.
If that makes sense. Um, so when we did the painting job, uh, it took us several covers to find out what, uh, what y'all wanted. What I told Suzie we could do is, is, uh, if you guys decide to go forward, what I would do is just order four or five different boxes. And then, so you guys can make a decision on what you want, then I'll just return the show.
And you can lay them out and.
Absolutely. We could lay six or eight or ten out at one time, and I, you know, just like paint covers, sometimes you just have to put it on a wall to see.
Yep.
What the best option is. So if there's gonna be in there, you're gonna spend the counseling on it, I, I'd rather be happy with it. Because even if I do a good job, I'm not happy, that's just.
Don't like that color.
Yeah. Uh, the last thing is, and, and this may actually be inconsequential, but, um, with the way that, that things are playing out, schedules. I told Suzie this, I'm like, it's, it would be nice if I was in town, but obviously, for me as a contractor, I would like to have the work, but it would be nice to be able to coordinate with the same guy. So if I have to stop painting to do this, uh, uh, certain, uh, for instance, what I told her was, when pews come out, ceiling gets done, then I can go ahead and put carpet on risers. So if pews come in, he can do this thing, even if I'm still painting on the walls, and it's not gonna get in his way. And then I can finish the outer radius and behind on the carpet when the painting's finished.
Got it. So she can do it, do it well.
Yeah, absolutely. And I, I know that three blocks from here. So I came to him like, weather, if I'm here. In fact, I, uh, drove my golf cart every time.
We can find you. Great, let's see, um.
Is there any delays with, with COVID and, uh, and everything else that's going on? Is there any delays in getting carpet?
So that is what I, I told her, the, the only thing that I am concerned about is, uh, the carpet tiles. I do think we're, uh, we can do three weeks out on those. The adhesive, the luan, I can go ahead and do all that stuff. Uh, but I told her that I would like to, obviously, if you guys go forward, I'd like to go ahead and order some samples within the next couple of weeks.
But how far are we out, Suzie, on finishing the ceiling? Is it at least two to three weeks, right?
And then, and then you gotta paint the ceiling, and then the scaling has to come out, so we're several weeks before, and if you're saying two to three weeks on carpet.
And the, and the benches, we know we're probably ten weeks out, pews, benches.
Yeah. So, and I'm thinking is, it may take, it may take us, uh, the larger, the smaller quantity is for shipping, much faster, obviously. So if I, if I pick out carpet tiles and order them, let's say they're here next week, you guys take a week inside what you want, and then I order it. They can be looking at it in three weeks, so that's five weeks though. And that should line up pretty, pretty close, five weeks.
Terry will be back on site tomorrow with a gentleman that's doing the ceiling, so I'll get an update from him. He was not here today, but he'll be back on site tomorrow. But he's done quite a bit of work up there, but there's still work, all the decorative building that's not up yet. So it's not time for painting.
Okay, good. Might have something actually, why not?
Yeah.
Well, it's not, well, it's on the schedule, it's easy to get everything else started. Do you have any other questions?
I'm having, uh, I'm trying to remember what color was picked for adding on the pews.
We have not picked that color yet.
That's a little, so we're coordinating that.
Yes, so once you pick the carpet, then we need to pick the, uh, the cushion pew color. Because I know I told, I was swimming to Jamie today that the, the pew gentleman, when he was here last, the manufacturer, when he was here last week, he said it's ten weeks for the material of the cushions. So we don't wanna prolong that. So the sooner we can change, or the sooner you all can select the carpet, and we can select the pew cushion color. Um, so we're not delayed by.
So just make sure we do that once we get the same.
Right, exactly.
Do that together.
And we can lay it all out, and we get, and we get, I just can't see it and lay it out like that, just we can pull out and then we can see.
Okay.
And, uh, again, that, that two thirty-five square foot, there were some places online, where I saw a little bit more than that, and I saw a little bit less than that. So whether, whether it's a little less, a little more, that's, the thing is what it is. So if I do select a carpet, then I, I bring it in, and it's like it's two fifty-five square foot, which is what it is.
Okay. I'd make a motion to approve tricyte painting and pressure washing, uh, for the carpet install, if you will, in the courthouse. Um, items two through five on the quote provided, in a, in the amount of twenty-nine thousand four hundred dollars. And just so the public knows, um, if we went with items one, three, four, and five, uh, didn't put down the luan and got, uh. A questionable surface for adhesive, or agent, uh, the price was twenty-six thousand one hundred. So there's approximately thirty, uh, three hundred dollars difference. And I, I don't think the math adds up down here because seventy-two minus forty-one is thirty-one. Down here in the total, it's a thirty-three hundred dollar difference. So there's a little bit of a mistake there somewhere.
Uh, yeah, as I was going over this with Suzie, there were a couple of mistakes that I, uh, made, uh, and you see the day, it says intervene. So I can, uh, I can fix that, that's no problem.
But the difference is the twenty-nine four should really be twenty-nine two. Right?
No, sir.
Twenty-two thousand plus seventy-two hundred would be twenty-nine thousand two hundred, so it's twenty-nine thousand four.
That is great, yes, sir.
So I'll approve within the amount of twenty-nine thousand two hundred.
Um, and the other, the other thing I do want, since this is a public meeting, um, as a contractor, I would feel much more hesitant. To put a five-year warranty through your money net on hardwood cracks. Because I'm gonna almost be a teenager just dealing, because you're not gonna avoid a scene being over.
Right. Okay, we appreciate it.
I'll second Jamie's motion. I've got a motion by Jamie to approve tricyte painting and pressure washing for the carpet, uh, install in the courthouse. For options two through five in the amount of twenty-nine thousand two hundred, seconded by Jerry. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you.
So, yeah, if you wanna get us, uh, if you give me a revised, uh, two thousand and eighteen date on it, so get a revised total and date.
I will, uh, I can fix that right now, I'm not gonna send it to the, to the co-adjournant address.
Okay.
I'll fix it right now.
Perfect, thank you. All right, next up, we have the regular insurance workers compensation renewal for twenty twenty-three.
So this is the annual renewal for the workers' comp? So this is the annual renewal for the workers comp coverage that starts, uh, one eight twenty-three.
Is this consistent with what was in the budget?
Uh, yes, we, we budgeted workers comp, yes. And in fact, Greg Gardner, our insurance agent, went, uh, on our behalf and asked for a reduction of the three thousand five hundred eighty-four dollars for us.
So I would make a motion to approve, uh, the workers' compensation renewal, uh, through Gardner Insurance Agency in the amount of sixty-two thousand three hundred and ninety-six dollars.
I'll second.
I've got a motion by myself, seconded by Jamie for Gardner Insurance for the workers' compensation renewal for twenty twenty-three. All in favor?
Aye.
Next up, we have the Gardner Insurance, uh, quote for the nurse managed clinic and nurse practitioner and medical malpractice insurance for twenty twenty-three. And is this, does that include, um, doc three's or is that a separate policy?
That's a separate one. This is the nurse managed clinic and the nurse practitioner. And it's shared between the budget and more budget as can the nurse managed clinic budget.
And to echo Jamie's question, uh, budget standpoint, this is right where we had planned it.
Yes, I believe, um, Greg had totaled the budget about fifteen percent greater, uh, for everything in twenty twenty-three, and this came in under that.
Great. And with that said, I would make a motion to approve Gardner Insurance for the medical malpractice insurance renewal for twenty twenty-three covering the nurse managed clinic and the nurse practitioner in the amount of five thousand two hundred and one and eighty-three cents.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by myself, seconded by Jerry, approve Gardner Insurance for the medical malpractice renewal. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, has there been, I think we had any board reports since last week?
I don't have it.
Uh, Suzie, do we have any announcements or anything that you need?
No, except just to everyone who has the public notice, the next meeting will be a Tuesday because of the holiday. So it'll be Tuesday, January seventeenth.
Tuesday, January seventeenth will be the next commission meeting.
Right, because the sixteenth is a holiday.
You're welcome. Any questions concerning, anything we haven't covered?
No. I had a printer and a coffee.
Okay, good, it's already in the works.
You have an eight pin.
I forgot some, uh, write all that other stuff, but it's a bike, so.
Yeah. All right, well.
Say that's what you get. Right there.
You're right.
Um, Jerry, what else, anything else?
Um. Suzie had brought up that, uh, Kelly has returned to work today. Um, but she does have some limitations, late, late, late limitations. Um, so it was asked if, uh, I think Suzie said that she goes back to the doctor at seventeen. Um, so it was asked if she could talk to her to be part-time, although for, uh, a little while longer. The fact that she can't do lifting, so she gets back to the doctor at seventeen, she did bring her statement. So she told me, I spoke to Suzie this morning, she told me that Kelly was back. Uh, I asked if she had her doctor's statement and her prescription, and we did get that back. So she is, uh, what to work now, so she does have a prescription.
I guess my question would be, why can't she manage her schedule to where Zach, um, can do those things that help her remain combined with her restrictions?
Um, I think that's a highly stressful possibility and, um, negative. I would say that if, if there's anything else that has to be done, wow. I would think that if she has lifting restrictions, then Zach is probably going to lean towards doing the calls. So there could be times if he's not there, if there's anything else that needs done, so.
But, I mean, if she does the calls, she shouldn't have to do any lifting, right?
Yeah, but she does, if she can't, I don't know that we can send her, technically send her on calls right away because she may have to go against the dog that weighs more than twenty pounds restriction.
Right, but the part, part-time person is not going to the calls either, correct?
No.
So regardless if there's part-time to help or not, that doesn't change who goes on the call.
No, I was just saying if Zach's on the call and the part-time person is not there, which he was not for a while on the day on the call, then I would be, it's been, it's been a different situation.
Uh, from a budget, from a budget standpoint as well, I assume, how are we paying the part-time? What, what budget line, how did we budget to pay that part-time physician for last month? There's an unbudgeted expense, yeah, we have a choice.
In the new budget, we did not budget for, we, we used to have a part-time person out there, but when COVID came, we did the layoff and then they never hired that person back. And it's been floating out, so, and it is not in the twenty twenty-three budget, so.
Got it.
Just asking you to work off.
I, I guess my opinion is if, if we could, I mean, if you can document a scenario where potentially that issue would come up and there's no way to avoid it, then I could maybe be persuaded to continue with it temporarily. But I can't, I guess I can't sit here in a five-minute conversation and come up with a scenario where collectively her and Zach uh, couldn't fulfill the obligations of the animal shelter and still meet, uh, her restrictions. That, that's just my opinion.
Yeah, yeah, and that's fine.
I just, I just think a decision needs to be made so that we know to tell that part-time person when they're stopped.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would.
About it is.
Yeah, I think I would agree with Jamie that this time we would continue as planned, that with her back, that we would no longer need the part-time position. And if, if there is further concern that the, the duties of the job can't be fulfilled after limited capacity, then, then she needs to come to us with, with that scenario or what, what, what it is in that role that can't be done before we're approving budget or approving funds or asking counsel for funds for something that we may not need.
Okay. Okay. Person? No, I don't have anything.
Anything from others? Nope. All right, with that, I'll take that. Any more motions for adjournment?
So made.
Seconded motion. Got a motion by Jamie, seconded by Jerry to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.